I'd like to call the Tuesday, April 7th, 2015 Papillion City Council Meeting in order. Ms. Butler, would you please take the role?
Florence, Mumgarde, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Klug, Stube, Ingberg.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
That is correct.
And a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in the back of the council chambers. Next is the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve consent?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Gaines.
Second.
Second by Councilman Stube. Mr. Mumgarde.
Yes, I'd like to take C-11 off the consent agenda, please.
C-11 is pulled. Let me find it. Do you have any proponents? Do you have any opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote on everything except C-11.
Sixty-eight zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is item C-11, Resolution R-15-0074, a resolution to approve a special designated liquor license for Players Keno Inc. doing business as Jerseys on May 24th, 2015 from 7:00 PM to 2:00 AM. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Mumgarde?
Second.
Second by Councilman Ingberg. Do we have any proponents? I believe the applicants here. Do we have any opponents? Council discussion. Mr. Mumgarde.
Yes, could you come forward from Jerseys? I want to know what you're going to do. Your application doesn't really say.
We're just having a Memorial Day celebration.
Excuse me?
A Memorial Day celebration.
Okay. And what are you doing, just expanding outside for that?
Mm-hmm.
Do you have any special plans on what you're going to do?
I think we're planning on having maybe some music, but I'm not too sure yet.
Okay.
We wanted to get approved for the liquor license first.
I can tell you, I've, to nobody's big surprise, I've been in your place a few times, and you're doing wonderful.
Thank you.
So, every time I go in there, especially during the basketball tournament, I'm just more than pleased at how busy you are. So, looking forward to, you say you're only going to have about 100 people. Oh, you'll have more than that. So, have a good party.
Thank you so much.
(Inaudible).
Kayla Ripple. Thank you.
Any other council discussion? Please vote.
Sixty-eight zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is item D-1, Ordinance 1713, an ordinance approving the issuance of refunding bonds Eagle Hills Golf Course Project, Series 2015 of the City of Papillion Municipal Facilities Corporation, in a stated principal amount not to exceed $3,250,000, approving and authorizing a bond purchase agreement with the corporation, providing for the sale of the bonds to the underwriter, authorizing a lease purchase agreement with the City of Papillion Municipal Facilities Corporation relating to the calling and redemption of outstanding bonds issued by the corporation to finance the acquisition of a municipal golf course, approving the execution of documents with respect to said lease purchase agreement, and providing for the publishing of this ordinance in pamphlet form. This ordinance was contingent upon the municipal corporation meeting, and they had that meeting at 6:30, I believe. Is there a council member that we'll introduce?
(Inaudible).
Heard it over here. Councilman Jaworski. Staff is recommending, as we do with all bond issues, a waiver of the second and third reading, so we don't take the risk in the bond market. Is there a motion to waive second and third readings?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Ingberg?
Second.
Second by Councilman Jaworski. Do we have proponents? Do we have any opponents? Any council discussion? Mr. Mumgarde.
Yeah, I was just, our finance director and I were talking earlier, and I just had some questions about the general operations and financing of the two golf courses. Now, this is refinancing the bonds out at Eagle. It's my understanding, and Nancy, please correct me if I'm wrong, it's my understanding that TARA bonds have entirely been paid off, right? Okay. And so, any excess, both of the courses pay for themselves for their operations. Is that correct? Okay. And so, any excess revenue at TARA over the operations, then that goes into the fund that helps pay for this, correct? Okay. And, well, since we're going to be reducing the amount that we're going to be paying annually on the bonds, what happens to that difference between what we used to pay, what we're paying now, and what we'll pay in the future?
It'll go into the golf cash reserves. And then, one of the philosophies we've got on managing the golf course now is kind of looking at a rolling five-year cycle, because there's going to be a year where we have bad weather, and it's going to be a horrible year, and revenues are going to be short. Well, if we don't want to, if we don't want that to be on the taxpayers, that short year's got to be funded by cash reserves. And so, then, in a couple of years, when we're having good years, revenues are up and expenses are down, that's the period to rebuild the cash reserves in that five-year cycle. So, part of it builds the cash reserves. If we get to a point, just like city cash reserves, that we have too much in cash reserves, then that's the point that we're faced with decisions. Capital improvements, reduce bond, I mean, reduce debt, a number of things you could do. But most of it's going to build cash reserves, then look at capital improvements, then probably look at debt payment, and that'd be part of that annual budget process.
Okay. So, with any refinancing, I look at this, and I think, well, the difference between what we're doing now and what we would do under this proposed plan is we won't get the Eagle bonds paid off as fast as, if we kept paying. I think that's obvious.
At the higher rate?
Yeah.
I mean, if we don't do it, we're at the higher rate.
Well, if we don't do it, we, but we quit paying sooner than if we do it. But in the meantime, so you end up paying longer, but you don't pay as much each time. So, you've got some use, I just want to make sure we've got some useful goal with that excess. I'll call that excess, because it's not really, but the difference. And that's going to be all cash reserves.
And all of our, and go to an extreme, all of our bonds are callable. So, if cash reserves get so high, and all of our capital improvements are taken care of, and we're sitting there with so much excess cash, you always have the option of calling the bonds as well.
Okay. This does sound like a good idea. I just had a little bit of questions about the operations. Thank you.
You bet. Any other, we're on the motion to waive second and third. This does take a supermajority. We've got two council members missing, which means everybody will have to end up being in the, to affirm it. But any other council discussion? Please vote on the motion to waive.
Sixty-eight zero nays.
Motion passes. Do we have a motion to approve Ordinance 1713?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Jaworski?
Second.
Second by Councilman Stube. Do we have proponents? Do we have any opponents? Any council discussion? Mr. Lefler is here, if anybody's got any questions. Please vote.
Sixty-eight zero nays.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next is item E-1, Ordinance 1704, an ordinance to amend Chapter 92, Article 3, Section 15, subsections A and F of the Papillion Municipal Code, having to do with the adoption of the National Electric Code, and to provide for an effective date. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Do we have proponents? Anybody want to speak in favor? Any opponents? I'll close the public hearing. Item F-1, Resolution R-15-0064, a public hearing and a vote, a resolution to approve a Class B liquor license for Western Oil II LLC doing business as Speedy Mart, number 2760, 100 West Centennial Road, and a manager application for Luke Mosher. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Do you have proponents? Is the applicant here? Okay. If you'd state your name for the record.
John Dillsaver. Just want to represent Western Oil, Speedy Mart. If there's any questions of the council, we've been a, sort of a long-term resident there. I previously worked for the former operator of that location for 26 years, and I'm going to continue on with Western Oil II, so.
Mr. Mumgarde.
I was just curious. I happened to notice on the Omaha City Council today that there were some Speedy Mart liquor license applications. And then I see this one. What's going on with Speedy Mart that you're coming in and getting liquor, getting liquor licenses?
Applications. Fortunately, the owner of Right Way Oil, Rex Akwall, has been in business for 50 years. He's going to turn 80 in May, and we've sold our 15 convenience stores to Western Oil.
Okay.
So, that's why you've seen a little bit of action. We did have two hearings in Omaha today at 2 o'clock. Two weeks before that, we had some additional hearings in Omaha, so.
So, it's just new ownership coming in with a new business model?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, hopefully, we keep on running it like he did for 50 years, but, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other proponents? Oh, go ahead.
I guess I will take, a little bit off the subject, but I drive by your store on Centennial a couple of times a day sometimes.
Yep. We'd like you to stop sometime.
I do, but what troubles me is your lack of landscaping.
Sure.
And the neighborhood has talked about that with city staff for a number of years. As I understand it, that the plan when that building was built required that landscaping be kept up. Now, it had some very nice pine trees for a number of years, and those got cut down. Now, you have terrible erosion. And we get, last year when we had the big rains, we got a lot of your gravel into the street. And I live up the street, and my neighbors noticed that, and they asked me about it. And we've had some conversations with staff.
Okay.
And then, of course, wintertime, we cut you a break, don't want to do that. But I drove by the other day and wondered again, and maybe you don't have, maybe, maybe Western Oil doesn't have the say on how that happens. But when are you ever going to do the landscaping on that corner that you're supposed to do?
Okay. I appreciate those comments. The property is leased property. Denny Hogan Homes. Many of you probably know Denny. Denny's passed on now, but it is still in that corporation. So, we're on a lease with that property. And we, you know, we did clean up all those bushes. There's the high line there, and so, certainly, we can't, you know, there's an easement with the high lines that go through there. But we certainly would like to maybe have the discussion with the council or somebody to maybe do something there with that gravel, because I know it is sort of an eyesore. It's directly on 84th Street, and we certainly would like to maybe, you know, have some discussions with our landlord also about that.
Well, yeah, yeah. See, the post office is next door to you.
Right.
So, you get a tremendous amount of traffic going by there.
Sure.
And that gravel gets out there, and it's a problem for the city. It's a problem for the people using that. And, you know, I'm going to apologize. I know that that's not your say, and I've heard the Hogan name discussed in this context before. Could you go back and make sure that your bosses know that at least this council member is tired of driving by and seeing the gravel washing out into the street? So, if you can put some pressure on your landlord to get some, you know, to clean that up, get some landscaping in there, do what the original plan required the landlord to do. If you could pressure the landlord, that would help us. I'd appreciate it.
Okay. I appreciate your comments.
That won't stop you from getting your liquor license, but nonetheless.
Well, I appreciate your comments, and we certainly would, will look at that, and I'll have some discussions with you on it.
Thank you. Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? I'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R-15-0064?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Stube, second by Councilman Glover. Do we have any more council discussion? Please vote.
Sixty-eight zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is item F-2, Resolution R-15-0056, a resolution to approve a final plat for the property legally described as part of the northeast quarter of the southwest quarter, part of the southeast quarter of southwest quarter, part of the southwest quarter of the southwest quarter, all located in Section 28, and also part of the southeast quarter of the southeast quarter, part of the northeast quarter of the southeast quarter, all located in Section 29, all located in Township 14 North, range 12 East of the 6th PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the north side of Highway 370 at 108th Street. The applicant is BHI Development. This is Granite Falls. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R-15-0056?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Stube?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gaines. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote.
Sixty-eight zero nays.
And I forgot to mention, Mr. Westergaard is here, if there were any questions. But I think we have a couple more on the same subdivision. Item F-3, Ordinance 1688, an ordinance to approve the change of zone of certain real property within the zoning jurisdiction of the City of Papillion, Sarpy County, Nebraska, same legal description, south half of the Section 28, and also part of southeast quarter of Section 29, all located in Township 14 North, range 12 East of the 6th PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the north side of Highway 370 at 108th Street, from agricultural AG and single-family medium density R2 to single-family residential medium density R2 and mixed-use MU, to amend the official zoning map of the City of Papillion by changing the zoning district boundaries of the zoning map in accordance with Section 20532 of the Papillion Municipal Code, and to provide for an effective date. The council is going to need to amend this one that we're getting ready to go to, to reflect an adjustment to the number of lots in Granite Falls, and that's indicated in the staff reports. I'll call for that amendment in a second. Do we have a motion to approve Ordinance 1688? Motion by Councilman Glover, second by Councilman Gaines. Do we have a motion to amend Ordinance 1688 to adjust the number of lots?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Ingberg?
Second.
Second by Councilman Jaworski. Do we have proponents on the motion to amend? Any opponents? Council discussion on the motion to amend? Please vote on the motion to amend.
Sixty-eight zero nays.
Do we have any further discussion on the motion as amended? Please vote.
Sixty-eight zero nays.
Motion passes. Item F-4, Resolution R-15-0057, a resolution to approve a subdivision agreement for SID 300 against Granite Falls. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R-15-0057?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Jaworski?
Second.
Second by Councilman Stube. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Sixty-eight zero nays.
Motion passes. F-5, Resolution R-15-0058, a resolution to approve a sewer and water connection agreement with SID 300. It's still Granite Falls. Motion to approve Resolution R-15-0058?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Stube?
Second.
Second by Councilman Jaworski. Any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Sixty-eight zero nays.
Motion passes. Item F-6, Resolution R-15-0059, a resolution to approve a final plat for the property legally described as a replat of lots 202 to 209, Outlot D, Kingsbury Hills, and also lots 1 to 28, Kingsbury Hills Replat 1, part of the right-of-ways of Sherman Street, 108th Street, 109th Streets, Cimarron Street, Laramie Street, all located in the southeast quarter of Section 29, and also together with part of the southwest quarter of Section 28, all located in Township 14 North, range 12 East of the 6th PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the northwest corner of 108th Street and Highway 370. The applicant is Stone Creek Plaza LLC, Kingsbury Hills Replat 2. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R-15-0059?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Jaworski?
Second.
Second by Councilman Stube. Do we have any proponents? Mr. Westergaard, you're still representing, aren't you? Okay. Do we have any opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote.
Sixty-eight zero nays.
Motion passes. F-7, Resolution R-15-0060, a resolution to approve the Fourth Amendment to Kingsbury Hills SID 275 subdivision agreement. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R-15-0060?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Jaworski?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gaines. Do we have any proponents? Any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Sixty-eight zero nays.
Motion passes. Thank you. Item F-8, Resolution R-15-0062, a resolution to approve the arterial street improvement program ASAP policy. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R-15-0062?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Jaworski, second by Councilman Stube. Do we have any proponents? Anybody's curious, Mr. Wilson from the county is here with experience with it. Do we have any opponents? Any council discussion? Mr. Mumgarde.
Yes, I'm going to ask Mr. Wilson if you'd come forward and give us the county's view of this, explain this a little bit.
Be happy to do so. Denny Wilson, Sarpy County Engineer. We enacted this program about four and a half months ago. It's probably one of the most favorable programs when it comes to user fees, because most of the people who are going to be generating traffic, especially in areas where you have to have widened streets, or if you're being paved, paving gravel like we do, those people are the ones paying the bulk of the money into the fund to help pay that. So, we found it to be a very appropriate and adequate funding source for us, and we're looking forward to teaming with Papillion in the future to help build some of the roads around Sarpy County and to widen some of them. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. How's the county fit into this whole project?
Well, the county has to be outside of the extraterritorial jurisdiction of any city to collect the fee, since it's a building permit fee. So, subsequently, we don't have nearly the capacity to have that fund generate money. I think the City of Papillion will benefit considerably more than what we do. But the fact that we'll be abutting some areas, we can use our funding to help the City of Papillion and vice versa.
So, we'll get roads like Shram Road improved?
Correct. Cape Heart, et cetera, yes.
Okay. Looking forward to that. Thank you.
Me too.
Thank you. Any other council discussion? Anything else, Mr. Mumgarde?
No.
Okay. Please vote.
Sixty-eight zero nays.
Motion passes. With that approval, we can do item F-9, Resolution R-15-0075, a resolution to adopt the arterial street improvement program ASAP priority projects. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R-15-0075?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Jaworski?
Second.
Second by Councilman Glover. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Council discussion. Mr. Stube.
Yeah, Mayor, just a question with regard to, I'm assuming staff went through and made a determination as far as the projects. Can you just talk a little bit about how they determine the projects, the priority, and then what happens in the future? How often do we reevaluate those particular projects?
Marty? Or Jeff?
I can take that, Bob. We actually went back and looked at our one and six-year road plan and coordinated with the county on some of the priority projects. Obviously, Shram Road between 84th and 90th Streets are a high priority. And then, we looked at dividing the ETJ up into sections. So, as we start to grow further west, we'll have additional corridors, and then identified projects within those corridors where there's high potential for development growth based on school district boundaries and those kinds of things. So, it was quite a process with Mark and Marty and I, sitting down and talking with the county, as well as Dan, the mayor, on what projects we felt were the highest priority and where those funds should be designated first.
Mayor, just a subsequent question would be, is that what do we anticipate from the standpoint of the revenue coming in? When would we think that we would have some funding available to essentially do some of these projects?
The, if this is, well, the ASAP program was adopted, it actually won't be effective until July 1st. The builders groups had asked that we give them some time with existing contracts they had with builders. It's an additional fee. They may not have been able to negotiate it upfront. So, they asked us to give them some additional time. So, it'll be effective July 1, and it will be collected immediately. There, within the program, there are provisions that would allow us to bond and use those fees to pay down the bond debt or that debt service on the bonds, or do joint partnership projects with the county and/or use those for federal aid projects where we've got an 80/20 cost share.
Anything else?
I think it is important for people to understand, though, especially since it's televised or people can watch it, the priority projects, when you're moving east-west, Shram Road, which has always been a problem as we've developed, is on the top of the priority list, as is Lincoln, which now with all the development at the ballpark, where you've got that same issue where it's now gravel west of 90th, and this will start to address that, so we don't end up with a Shram-type issue down the road as that area develops. So, east-west, Shram and Lincoln came out as the high priorities. And then, in the three corridors, even you go north-south, 66th, 108th, and 120th. So, again, we all have good east-west and good north-south access. So, good, I think they're good priorities. Any other discussion? Please vote.
Sixty-eight zero nays.
Motion passes. I don't think we've had any committees meet other than the MFC. No report out of that, because we've already voted on that item. Do we have any comments from the floor? And if you'd state your name for the record.
Good evening. My name is Lacy Rubel.
I'm Dale Gubels.
And we're volunteers for the Sarpy Green Team, Green Bellevue. We appreciate the support of all five of Sarpy County mayors with signing the Earth Day proclamation declaring April 26th Earth Day in our county. Thank you, Mayor Black, for your support and help. I would like to extend an open invitation to the Sarpy County Earth Day Celebration and Expo that will be held from 12 to 4 at the Bellevue Public Schools Lead Activity Center. The event is free and friendly for all ages and is made possible by over 50 of our local businesses, nonprofits, schools, churches, and government agencies working together. The primary purpose of the event is education about how each of us individually can do our part to lower carbon emissions and create a healthier community. There will be vendor displays and exhibits on recycling and composting, renewable energy, gardening, and plant sale, an e-waste collection, delicious local foods, an elementary school art display, an environmental artist, an inspiring program that includes a trashin' show, and much more. We also offer a 5K and Zoomathon fundraiser. For more information, you can go to Green Bellevue website at greenbellevue.org/earthday. Please do stop by, and thank you again for your support with the Earth Day proclamation.
Remind us of the day and time.
It's April 26th from 12 to 4.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other comments from the floor?
High school students.
Yes. Got a lot of high school students. You guys got to come up and share your name and what brought you here.
I'm Carter McCormick, and I'm here because of our American government class kind of forces us to.
Mr. Keller?
Yeah.
Yes. I'm Emmy Lesser, here for the same reason.
I'm Amanda Horn.
Jessica Karen.
Thank you. If you need to prove you are here, tell him to call me. Any other comments from the floor? Any council comments? Just a few reminders and a few updates from the last couple of weeks. The Veterans Park Committee has met a couple of times, and a reminder on, well, I'll give the dates in a second. Did attend the Khalia Public Information Session, or in that process? Anything to share there, chief, or?
We're looking forward to going to.
(Inaudible).
Reaccreditation. We're looking forward to working through some issues that were identified. There was nothing that was substantial in any way.
Well, the timing was good for you to come on board.
Yes, it was.
And the rest of your team. Thanks. Mr. Hoynes, Mr. Sturzma, Mr. Craig, and Ms. Butler and I did meet with a downtown business owner. Some of the downtown businesses are, I think, exceeding their business plans. It's really getting to be a healthy environment. And one of them's already looking at a possible expansion, so we had a meeting with them to see what they had to work on there and what their plans were. Attended a meeting with the CHI, Nebraska Health CEO, tried to understand what some of their plans are and reiterate the importance of a local community hospital. Also, attended the city Easter egg hunt. Ms. Myers, I mean, not Ms. Myers, Ms., she's sick. I was going to tell Ms. Hanson, "Thank you," but she's not here. But the rec. department, along with the mayor's youth council and several other community partners- and several other community partners. That was a huge event. Twenty thousand eggs. Great weather and a lot of smiling faces, and I don't think there was one complaint. So, the city Easter egg hunt's becoming a great tradition. Also, attended the Sarpy County Economic Development Board meeting. And then, I also attended the United Cities Meeting. Most of it was discussion on the legislature. No real update, other than it sounds like right now the legislature's kinda paralyzed. Lot of issues starting to hit them, and I don't think they're working through a lot of them. And the budget's starting to come up, and the session's running out. This is a long session. It's the ninety-day session, but there's probably only, what, about forty-five days left, Mr. Mungard? And they haven't even begun the budget yet, and they have to do that. And so, probably not a lot will get done this session, which would mean most of the bills will be carried over into the second year, the short session next year. Reminder, the neighborhood grant program that was put in place two years ago. There's a flyer at your desk, and there is the grant money that is to be awarded. So, remember, that program allowed a certain number of grants per ward. So, if you're aware of neighborhood groups or organizations that have projects in your ward that benefit the community that need to be funded, that that grant program is available. So, maybe help promote that.
There is a ribbon-cutting tomorrow morning at nine o'clock. Jersey Mike's up at Seventy-second and Cornhusker. If you haven't been, if people haven't been up there for a while, that commercial strip bay that was built. Chipotle is up there and open. Jersey Mike's is having the ribbon-cutting tomorrow. Building permits have been pulled for Pie Five Pizza and also Smoothie King. So, that's filling out real fast. This Saturday, the eleventh, also, in the evening, there's a steak fry at the American Legion, and all of those funds are gonna go to Veterans Park. So, they've been doing a lot of promotion to try to generate interest there. So, if you're looking for a good steak on Saturday night, go to the Legion. The spring cleanup is the sixteenth to the nineteenth of this month, from seven in the morning to five in the afternoon. So, take advantage of that. And there is a letter from the NRD at your table as well. Wednesday, the twenty-ninth, at ten in the morning is the dedication of the WP Five Recreation, Prairie Queen Recreation. And that is open, if people aren't aware. And then, I forgot to mention that the spring cleanup,[1703.45]